To order the village board meeting of Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, roll call please.
We're going to do the pledge first and then roll call.
Why is that?
Heard the Ed Brando.
Don't you want to make sure everybody's here?
Okay, sure. Schultz?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Blackwood?
Here.
Hollenbeck?
Here.
Brando?
Here.
Krecklow?
Here.
Rooney?
Here. All right, if we could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Lucy, proof of posting, please.
The agenda was posted on the website, the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Center, the post office, and Badger Bank.
Okay. Moving down to number five, we got our first iteration of public comment. Any takers? Give three minutes, if you could just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. My name is Bill Christ, 312 Oriole Lane, Cambridge. Here mostly just to talk about my concern about your lack of financial management of the village finances, taxpayers' monies. You know, a couple examples, since I'm limited to time, I'll try to keep these short, but you've not had a treasure report all year, not one. And there's not been any concern raised by any of you, when are we going to get a treasures report? You have no idea what you spent and where you got with spending. Your audit report from last year isn't final yet. You got preliminary, what, two months ago? You don't even have a follow-up on your minutes. Where's the audit? How come we can't get that done? What's going on? Seems odd. Doesn't seem odd, it's really weird. You hired a new employee, or you haven't hired an employee yet, maybe you have. But you authorized the hire of a new employee, that's not in the budget. You, um, the village administrator reported, I think that same meeting earlier, that she was having to take money out of other funds to fund the general fund. You have no money and you're hiring a new headcount. You didn't even look at judging how that expense is versus other expenses and was that needed more so than other things? You just went ahead and said, well, we'll just borrow the money. Last meeting, it was indicated you were going to borrow about $700,000 to fund your overspend, I think most of it was funding of the overspending this year. There's not a recap in any of the minutes what the $700,000 is for, there's none in tonight's. Looks like you want to borrow it for 20 years. That's like buying groceries today and funding them for 20 years. Doesn't make any fiscal sense. You know, 20-year, you might do a 20-year loan on a house or land, but on current year expenses, you shouldn't be borrowing for 20 years. That's, that's insane. So, I mean, you guys need to get on top of the finances, one way or the other.
All right, thank you, Bill. All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Representative Joan Fitzgerald, I'm the state assembly rep for this area. Just here tonight, I brought a handout for you guys, I've been trying to stop at town and village and city meetings, just to give you a little update on the budget that we passed back in July and how that might impact you, might help you answer some questions people have, if anyone has any questions about state stuff. What I really want to make sure that you're aware of after you take a look at this, my contact info is here, my office is there to help to answer questions. If anything comes up, please feel free to contact us. You can see at the top of here, I did list some of the grants that are available, there are some continuing grants for municipalities, a couple of them related to roads. One for local projects program, those were grants that were in the biennium and are now in our new biennial budget as well. We can certainly help if you have questions about any of those grants, we can certainly direct you to the places where you need to go to get information on those. And then the rest of this is just some basic information for you. Some of the big picture spending that we did at the state level in the middle there. On the bottom are some next steps, some of the things that I know are important to constituents, important to me as well. We have a lot of questions about Knowles Nelson, that stewardship program, we're still working on that. We are doing some bill introduction related to labor, education. We've been trying to do some things with local government and funding. The last biennium did have an increase in shared revenue, which was great, we know that's not answering all your problems and all the questions certainly that I hear from town, village, city people. So, we are continuing to have those discussions on where that might look moving forward. Your concerns have not fallen on deaf ears, as far as that goes. And then on the back of this, when the governor introduces his budget, that's one thing. People hear that in the news and then we actually pass a budget. So this is just a little comparison of those two, in case you ever get anyone asking questions or if you have questions about that, it's just kind of a big overview picture of what's in the state budget. And then I included just one of my cards, here lists some of the things I've done and of course, all my contact information. So, again, please feel free to reach out, that's what we're here for, is to help you access state resources and be that, you know, even if you just want to call with concerns or questions, whatever, please feel free to contact my office. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming by.
All right. Any more for public comment? Come on up, Jackie.
So I'm Jackie Frye, I currently live in the town of Oakland. Moved out of Cambridge for specific reasons, because of some of the concerns, specifically the water, fire EMS and different things. We moved to Oakland, August, it'd be a year this August. And I was, I'm coming to some of these meetings primarily as concerned for the fire EMS. But I was looking back in some of my papers and found an email, actually from October 14th of 2006. And we had some concerns back then about some different things. And I thought rather than rewrite it, I would just reread it, because it's kind of exactly how we feel today. And it was emailed to, to Don Treloff and Ron Dayton at the time, so Don Treloff was the village president. So, we purchased our home, my husband, Don, and I, in the village of Cambridge in 1997. We both grew up in Cambridge and wanted to raise our family here. We love this community, the schools, our home and the neighborhood. We put an addition on our home in 2003. We understood that our taxes would go up because of the added square footage. We made sacrifices and worked that additional tax payment amount into our budget. We didn't like it, but we did plan accordingly for an increase. We felt that our desire to stay in our hometown of Cambridge forever, to raise our family and the need for additional space warranted the costs involved. We have now come to the conclusion that adding in addition to your home is not cost-effective and we would not encourage it to any friends and/or family members. I do not understand why homeowners seem to get penalized for trying to improve and make your home look nice and keep the neighborhood looking nice. We, at that time, back in 2006, we received our most recent reevaluation assessment and I have, we have some serious concerns about living in the village of Cambridge. I am afraid of what our tax bill will be for this year and the years to come. How do some people come up with the additional amounts to pay for such an increase? We really love living in Cambridge and would not want to live anyplace else, but the reality of it is that it is just not affordable and it is slowly and very painfully putting people, including us, in the red. I am confident that there are other citizens of Cambridge that also feel this way and have these same feelings and concerns. Talking about our personal finances is a very confidential matter and it's not an easy thing to do for some, but my husband and I felt it was important to let you know how the common middle-class folk feel. Our monthly water and sewer bills, that's a topic in and of itself, that's a side note, not in my email, used to be, and this is from 2006, and we moved in the home in 1997, granted, I realize there's going to be increases. But our monthly water and sewer bills used to be, shocker, between $30 and $40 per month. They at now, in 2006, run between $80 and $100. Our property taxes per month used to be 200 and are currently 320, probably after the assessment, soon to be over 400 after a new reevaluation assessment. My husband and I are thankful that we both have decent jobs and are thankful that our salary and wage increases, but our salary and wage increases certainly are not keeping up with these kinds of increases. We are afraid.
Jackie, can you hold on one second, just to keep it fair, would anybody like to give Jackie their three minutes? All right.
Thank you. We are afraid of what the future will bring. Will we have to sell our home and move out? Stop some of our very important contributions like giving to our church, putting away for our children's education? Or stop, cut back on our 401K savings plans altogether? We like to dominate to many good causes here in Cambridge. Do we now stop doing that? The increase of property tax dollars has to come from somewhere in our budget. I cannot even imagine how elderly folks on a fixed income are feeling. How do people continue to afford such things as vehicle payments or even daycare providers? So we have an appointment with the assessor next week to discuss how the process works, how we can get a better understanding. The property assessment appeal guide, which was very informational, put out by the Department of Revenue, suggests that if we believe our taxes are too high, we should contact the people responsible. I just wanted to share with you both that these are some of our concerns and we, and to ask you to determine and prove the kind of a spend, spending that results in property taxes to continue to go up and up. We believe that it has to stop somewhere. Will anybody ever be able to live in Cambridge anymore? All we want to do is work hard to try and do the right thing, get involved in the community, pay our bills, make good decisions, raise and or teach our children to be responsible, young adults, go to church and just be happy, but it gets more and more scary and difficult to do this in Cambridge. Thank you for taking the time to hear our concerns, we appreciate it. If you could forward these on to the appropriate people, we would be much appreciated. And I do, if anybody wants to see them, I actually have my water bills from the time we moved in over there to now and that is another huge concern of ours, is obviously the water and everything that went on here in the village. Our last bit water bill, when we moved out August 21st, 2024, was $381.03. Now, granted, we had kids there and whatever, I don't know how much water we used or whatever, but to me, a monthly water bill of $200, $300, $400 is insane. And if you talk to anybody outside of this community, they would agree. So, I agree with the budgeting and I thought it was just really ironic that here we are almost 20 years later with the same thing going on, so thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Jackie. All right, any other public comment tonight? All right, with nothing, we're going to move on to number six, the approval of the consent agenda. And I'm showing here that we have approval of minutes from the village board meeting of 9:9, 2025, and operators licenses that are in your packet. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Trustee Krecklow make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Trustee Blackwood second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any?
Yeah, a couple corrections. The, in our packet, it said the meeting minutes were for August 26th, that should have been September 9th. And then, uh, under reports for item number six, it says trustee Hollenbeck, that should have been trustee Blackwell.
Good.
Sorry, Blackwood. Trustee Blackwood and, um, I think those were the only two I noticed.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved, moving on to committee reports. Uh, 7A, Water and Sewer Committee, that would be Paula.
So I apologize, because I don't have access to my emails right now, so I can't pull up the previous agenda. So, I will try to go off the top of my head on what we talked about.
Well, who, Sarah's on with you?
Anyone else who was there can remember?
Sarah.
Cody? Do you want to help out with, or do you have a, do you want to help out with what we talked about in the last meeting?
Good evening, everyone, I believe some of the topics we discussed were a, I requested to purchase a valve exerciser.
Yep.
And we ended up, landed on renting one instead of purchasing. Well, three, submersible pump is scheduled to be installed October 6th. I can't remember anything else off the top of my head right now.
Spent a lot of time discussing the Rockdale regionalization.
Oh yeah, and the Rockdale regionalization, which is, is it later in this agenda? No, it's not in this agenda, is it? Yeah, we did a lot with the Rockdale regionalization and the contract for that, so that's where we spent the majority of the time.
Any action taken on the Rockdale thing or?
So the action from the Rockdale is that, uh, there were a number of items that we wanted to see changed in the contract. I think one of the biggest concerns, and I think Sarah voiced it and I concurred with Sarah, that the forced main that they need, that, that Rockdale needs to be responsible for it all the way to the connecting point, that Cambridge shouldn't be responsible for it within the village lines of Cambridge, because the only reason that line's going in is because it's for, for Rockdale. So it makes sense that Rockdale would be responsible for the whole thing. So I think that was one of the biggest concerns and then, um, having an understanding of what the base rate is going to be that we charge them each month and then the connection fee. So those were the two big, those are probably the three things we spent the most amount of time talking about.
Sure, thank you.
All right, thank you, Cody.
Yes, no problem.
Any questions or concerns for Paula for Water and Sewer Committee? If not, we're going to move on to B, 7B Economic Development Committee, Brian?
We met last night, uh, met with Kathy Yurgis from the Collaborative 523. We talked to her about the, some of the initiatives they have going on, they have the Nactis project, they have some grant funds that they have come into. We talked about collaboration with the Economic Development Board, the Collaborative Visit Cambridge, how it's kind of a PR on one side, more governance on the other side and then, uh, working to help those small businesses. So ways that we can connect in the future. And that was pretty much most of the main parts of that meeting.
Any questions for Plan Commission, for Brian?
Economic Development.
Yeah, Economic Development, but we're going to go right into Plan Commission C. Uh, I understand that we didn't have a quorum for that, so we won't.
Can I have a question though, because there was no, there was no action that was going to be required out of anything on the, in the meeting? So two questions, one, could we have held the meeting anyway since there were going to be no votes? And two, why have a meeting if there's nothing, if there's no action that's going to be taken?
So, uh, I made the call to not hold the meeting, since we didn't have a quorum, there was no action, but it would have been discussion, but with a seven-member board and three members there, what, how much discussion really, you know, could we have had? We had on the agenda, uh, the review of the rates, which we'll still have on the future agenda, and then we went over that we have multiple hearings coming up, uh, set the schedule for that. So that was basically what we thought we could do with not a quorum there.
Okay, all right.
Okay, moving on to 7D, Library Board, Jennifer?
Yes, we, um, met last Wednesday and September is library card signup month, so if you have not gotten a library card, make sure you sign up for one at the library. We had, uh, the school superintendent came and visited us. She has a therapy dog and is willing to volunteer for some programming for that. Uh, the library board is continuing to work on its budget and will have that submitted to the full village board at the end of next month.
All right, any questions for Jennifer? Okay, moving on to 7E, Fire and EMS Commission, Kristen?
Um, we held our, uh, monthly meeting on September 17th. We had, uh, several things on our agenda. One of them was an amendment that we recommended to bring to the municipalities from the IGA, section 4.1.2. And the amendment that we, as commissioners, voted unanimously on was that the budget should be passed by all of the municipalities unanimously, not majorally, which is currently how the, um, IGA reads. All commissioners agreed that one municipality should not be able to hold the budget of another municipality hostage. So I thought that was a very positive outcome from that meeting. It was to be brought forth for an action item, but apparently I did not get it in on time, so that's fine, we will do that at another meeting. It will need to be passed by all the community boards, but we're not expecting any issues with that. We have, we currently have one very qualified candidate who submitted a resume for the director position, which we hope to schedule an interview with soon. We did have two other candidates who unfortunately rescinded their resumes and are no longer interested in the position. Our meeting on the 17th was also our budget meeting, which I want to give a huge, huge shout out to Tracy Brandle from Lake Mills. She put in a ton of hours to get a budget draft put together for us to work off of. We did, um, come up with the budget that night. Due to agenda snafu, we had to hold a second meeting on Monday night to be able to actually approve sending it to the municipalities. It is, I would say, not a budget that I personally am proud of, but, um, we agree that there will be some work that will need to be looked at from the municipalities. We had a discussion on the sustainability of the district as a whole, given the costs that are, are associated right now with services. And so, another recommendation that we had was to hold a four municipality meeting to discuss the budget itself and the sustainability of the district as a whole, because we feel all four community, excuse me, all four communities should have input on that. So, the hope is to have that meeting in the next two to three weeks and I will get dates, uh, out to the clerks so that we can get something scheduled.
Okay. Any questions for Kristen? All right, if not, we're going to move on with our treasurer, the approval of bills and discussion of possible action, number eight.
So there is only one bill run for tonight's meeting and it was in the amount of $52,678.73.
Okay. Could you do the highlights of bills over 5,000, please?
There is one bill over 5,000 and that was a Badger Bank loan, number 50840, for $14,552.69.
All right. All right, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Trustee Krecklow make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $52,608.73.
Do I have a second?
Blackwood second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any questions or concerns?
Lucy, can you remind me what the payment, the loan payment was for?
For Badger Bank?
Yeah.
It is an older loan, I can get you more information, the invoice is in the, in the folder as well.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? If not, roll call, please.
Rooney?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Krecklow?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Brando?
Yes.
Blackwood?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, bills are paid. Unfinished business discussion and possible action on Welcome to Cambridge signs. Who's got the helm on that one? Cody?
Yes, sir. Good news and bad news regarding the welcome signs, the West Side sign, Quick Trip, was approved and we are good to put it in. The East Side over on Park Road and Highway 12 was denied by Jefferson County zoning. As of right now, there is no way to get around that.
What did they deny it for?
It's zoned residential and they don't allow advertising on residential properties. I asked if it was a hard no and they said yes, it was. My question to you is, how would you like me to proceed?
Could we, has anyone contacted the bowling alley to see if we could put it on that corner by the bowling alley?
The only other, uh, contact we had was the previous location, which was the golf course. But as far as I know, no one's looked into the bowling alley.
Yeah, and, and the golf course would be okay, it's just like on the wrong side of the road, right?
Yes.
I'm trying to think what other businesses are along that road that might be willing to put a Welcome to Cambridge.
I believe the bowling alley and the golf course are the only.
Well, there's the restaurant.
There's the restaurant, yes.
I don't know if they want a big Welcome to Cambridge sign in the middle of the yard, but, I mean, so there would be other things we could reach out to, I don't know, do we want to go back to the book, to the book, to the golf course?
Did we know from Jefferson that they don't allow advertising signs on private property?
Initially, when we started this work with the welcome signs, uh, it was, the initial work was done by the interim director, Jay Ames, and he passed me the information. And I was working off that information in good faith and I thought we were all good. So unfortunately, uh, I don't know if that was ever looked into prior to. I had just gone off, what was given to me at, at the time.
And, and Jane had been involved in some of this stuff too and I, I think we just didn't, we probably just didn't reach out to Jefferson County to take a look at that, yeah.
Where, where did we lie with the golf course, though? Of course, it was already kind of pre-approved already, it was already kind of a done deal and then another opportunity rose, correct? Is that?
Correct, the golf course never told us no.
Right.
Uh, but we never filled out, we never started any permitting with them, so.
I'm fine, I don't know where the rest of the board stands on it, but I'm fine interacting or having that conversation with the golf course. Again, again, Paula, you, you bring up a good point about it not being on the right, the preferred side.
Yeah, preferred side.
But at this point, you know, this, this proverbial jelly of the month club of the Welcome to Cambridge signs needs to be, I want to, want to get this done.
Put it to bed, yeah.
So. There doesn't seem to be a lot of options on that side, so it sounds like the golf course is the clearest path. So, I, I would be in favor of getting going with that.
I would as well.
We had a previous meeting, uh, out there, would you like the exact same location we had previously discussed?
Let's see, that was you, me, Chuck, oh Chuck, who isn't here anymore, Mark, who isn't here anymore. I mean, I would favor the same site, it, you know, again, it's not preferred, but it's a site and we know that the site works.
I thought Jane had already done some documentation and paperwork regarding it, so I don't know if that's the same spot that you guys looked at.
I think so, because we had, when we went out there. I think so, because we had, when we went out there, we had kind of looked at two or three specific areas along that corridor, all on the golf course property, and with the... What's the word I'm looking for?
Right-of-way.
Thank you, that's the word I'm looking for. You know, the site, spot that we picked seemed to be the best visible with it.
When can the east side location, when are you trying to do them at the same time?
We really should do them at the same time, because we won't have to pay any additional fees. Well, there's no fees associated with it, but they have, they have to install them at the same time in order for that, to get that deal.
So if we don't install them at the same time, we have to either incur the cost to install the second one, or we have our staff try to install the second one, and, you know, that can be problematic.
Okay.
I don't know how long, starting over with the golf course, will take.
That's what'd be mine.
And I did, the other permit I submitted for the Quick Trip side, I put October thirty-first as the latest install date, so I thought, I thought that was going to be plenty of time, but I didn't account for an entire, entirely new permitting process.
So that permit would have to be resubmitted then, right? Because we won't have it in before.
Or I'm thinking at this point, I'm thinking at this point, if we just get the one in. And if we have one Welcome to Cambridge sign, we have one Welcome to Cambridge sign. Because...
I'd rather get something in, I don't know, because again, we could be here for another couple of months, another meeting, they have to have another thing, another, you know, plan commission to have approval of certain things, if it has to be, I just see months that we'd have to wait for another thing.
Let's, I would say, let's install the one, and if we have to fundraise to install the second one, then we fundraise to install the second one.
Well, I would also reach out to the sign company and see if there's any fees that are incurred, because if we're waiting on permitting or whatever, they may be fine with just installing one and then coming back and installing others, so...
I have spoken with the sign company, I've just, they just told me, we have to give them a date, they'll come out and do it, but it does have to be the same, the same day.
For both sides?
For both sides.
Well...
If we want to...
What's a ballpark of the cost that would occur for the other side? I'm not holding, just ballpark, is it thousands of dollars, have them come out again?
I didn't ask. I, yeah, I didn't ask. I think it would be a good idea, we are completely good to go on the Quick Trip side. I can just give them a date, though, you can come and install it, and that would also give us time to decide on what we want to do on the east side, east side of town.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I'm fine with moving forward with getting something in, so...
I'll make a motion to proceed with installing the Welcome to Cambridge sign on the west side of Cambridge in the Quick Trip location.
I'll second. Trustee Cricklow, second, sorry.
Oh, Trustee Hollenbeck made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns? The only concern I have is what the cost is going to be for the, if you can reach out to them and find out and let, let us know.
Absolutely.
The question was going to be then, are we making a decision to only install one, or like, one, or...
We need to move forward trying to get the other one, I think it's just going to take a while, right?
Well, hopefully not too long, it could be as, as simple as reaching out to Jane and saying, hey, what do we still have on the docket for what we agreed with, with the, with the golf course?
And she could hopefully just dust off the easement that she had, the easement document that she had already created, and present that to them, and hopefully they can get back to us.
So maybe we would be able to get them in, so...
By that...
Maybe.
There's still our permits, though.
Yeah, there's still some permitting, so, okay. But hopefully we won't be that bad, so, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right. All right, so now we are moving on to new business, number ten. Discussion and possible action on 2025 Financial Management Plan Workshop Number One, presentation by Ellers. And we got Brian here from Ellers. Brian, take it away.
Thank you for having me. Would anybody like hard copy?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I would too, please.
Lucy has a hard copy, too?
I don't need a hard copy.
Thank you.
Easier to take notes.
You don't need a hard copy for our records?
I already have a hard copy for our records.
I'm good, I don't...
It was included in the pack as well.
Brian, you have an extra copy? Yeah. Here, I'll just put that here, appreciate it. I'll take the folder, though, that goes all around Wisconsin.
Can I catch the paper?
Yeah.
I love the paper they use.
I know.
I know, I just love the paper. My God, plastic.
I want to know what that...
Once again.
So, thank you all for having me here tonight. What we're looking to do, if you remember when my colleague Casey and I were sitting here in the middle of summer, was looking at a full financial picture of all of the village's financial funds, so that includes the governmental funds and the enterprise funds or your utilities. We already do TID annual reporting, so that's kind of just going to be rolled in, that wasn't part of like any of our service here, because we already do annual TID reporting, we're just kind of putting it all together, and so it's essentially three engagements in one now. We do, we do have everything all here for tonight. I would say if we get to a lengthy point at all that you all want to agree to say we can move this to the next meeting, I'm completely okay with that, because we have like three workshops we can work with you all on. So there's sixty pages of presentation, and then there's twenty-plus pages of appendices, and that's why there's such a thick packet here, but it's everything. So say if we just get through the governmental funds, and then you want to table this stuff for another meeting, we're totally okay with that. The other thing I'll preface before I jump into this is, the first workshop is intended to be high-level and educational, so this is not a line-item argument night. This is intended to kind of say, going into drafting the initial budget, here's what we see, maybe a look back into the future as well, obviously, and then a look forward, or, excuse me, a look back into history, and a look forward into the future as well. So I want to emphasize this is just kind of an initial draft budget that we mostly put together with the assistance of your staff, and it would be the intent to, after tonight, send kind of that line-item budget document in Excel to staff for all of the funds. They can disseminate that to all of you, and then you guys start working on the budget process, and we are here along the way, and we'll do the court, you know, the following workshops after that point, where we start diving deeper and deeper, and then get you to, you know, your public hearing notice and the public hearing to adopt the budget. So hopefully that all makes sense, but again, high-level intentionally for tonight. So speaking to those goals, we want more so an understanding and not just initial reaction to numbers, understanding that these are not the final numbers. To understand that process, we're going to talk about kind of what's our role, and our role meaning kind of all of you. The why we do kind of what we do in our process, so you can get an understanding of how the sausage is made, and how we look at municipal budgeting, and then how we get it done, and then, I say initial flavor, just to kind of understand that this is step one, and we'll be continuing this process as we go. So on the next slide, where it says setting the stage, what's our role? The goal here for us is to, you know, when a community says we would like a financial management plan, is we want to turn your budgeting process into a financial planning process, where it's not just kind of a, you know, staff draft a budget, we'll react, we'll see how that goes, and then put something down and adopt this budget, understanding we can change it along the way. We want a very high-level view of how it impacts not only, you know, today's tax rates, but tomorrow's decisions for budgets, because the state of Wisconsin laws have a lot of connectivity year over year. The other reason for doing so is understanding questions like one of your public member had, like, why are we doing this, why are we doing that, in terms of how long should the debt be issued, items like that, so that we're talking about that ahead of time, prior to you executing those decisions. So again, trying to make it more of a collaborative, proactive financial planning process instead of just a budget. Why do we need it? Obviously, the goal is to sustain your existing services and plan for future investment. The problematic areas, though, however, are all of the operating frameworks that you have surrounding you, i.e. levy limits, expenditure restraint, keeping stable tax rates, how do we get affected by revals, as another public member added here tonight, other financing limitations, and then of course, utility rates. So on the next slide, kind of the how, in terms of our goals that we hope to achieve with the Village of Cambridge moving this forward, is we want to make sure you're understanding some of your financial trends for operation, and as well, capital budgeting, so it can kind of help you launch into the future to say where have been some of the problematic areas, so we'll touch on that lightly tonight. We'll look to illustrate some of this long-range levy forecasting, as well as the utilities. So this, I think the utilities one obviously became very imperative with the well project and the PSC rate case in 2024, but we'll kind of dive for the next ten years what the utilities, all the utilities look like, inclusive of the water utility. We'll look to provide a general assessment of your fiscal strengths and challenges, and then the most important one that I always highlight for tonight is if you can't tell me on a base level how levy limits work, then I've failed. So I'm going to have a very specific coloration of my boxes intentionally, so, just for that. So we'll jump in. The next section is kind of the history and methodology. The first slide there reads financial positives and challenges. One of the most important things for municipal budgeting is understanding where your fund balances reside, so that's, think of that as reserves, but that also can be inclusive of liabilities as well. And so there, just speaking to the general fund, we'll speak to the other funds kind of later on, but just speaking to the general fund. The year-end 2023 was at negative sixteen percent, and the estimated year-end for 2024 is slightly better at negative fourteen percent. This is all to say that, right, there's some money that's owed within the general fund to the other funds of government. The Moody's median, so this is kind of for rated communities, and understandably, the Village of Cambridge is of the size and scale that, you know, may not always warrant a rating, but it's understand, it's important to understand some external optics when you start thinking about how much fund balance should we have. One of the key ones, right, would be a credit rating agency that's speaking to how credit-worthy you are to repay your debt. So that's one that we highlight. Moody's median for Wisconsin communities is forty-five percent. I would call that kind of on the higher end. The GFOA, or the Governors Finance Officers of America typically recommend around three to four months, so that's more closer to, right, twenty-five percent. We'll see a lot of communities instill policies that say we want our general fund balance to be no less than twenty percent or fifteen percent as a minimum, but a lot of communities kind of go to twenty-five percent following that GFOA minimum. If they are rated, right, they'll probably try to meet their credit rating agency's opinionated version of where they fit amongst their peers, so you may see higher policies there in other communities. The next one would be looking at levy limits and net new construction, so I'm on the top-right one in the financial positives and challenges slide. All municipalities face levy limits, so no matter what community you are in the state, you are subject to levy limits. What that is, is you are only allowed to raise your levy to certain levels, absent some changes, and we'll get into what all of that is on a future slide. But net new construction is the primary number in terms of driving the change into how much you can levy for the upcoming budget year. The four-year average for the Village of Cambridge for net new construction was three-point-four-seven percent, so that's again, how much net new construction you've had. Net new construction is new rooftops minus teardowns, so understand that's not just new rooftops, if there's a rebuild, right, there's a subtraction component there. For Dane County, the four-year average was just under two and a half percent, at two-point-four-nine percent. For Jefferson County, that four-year average was just over one percent. So all in all, you have had some positives there in terms of where the net new construction has been. However, there's a buying power element of, that percentage means nothing to me, honestly, it's kind of how much more dollars does that give us to make sure that we can, you know, grow with those increasing costs to serve, you know, new construction. For 2025, so I'm on the bottom left now, the village's net new construction was five-point-six-nine-five percent. That buying power was about sixty-three thousand dollars. So what that means is, that's what you can add to what you levied next year, and I'll explain that further on a slide, it'll be written down and highlighted in bright orange. But sixty-three thousand dollars, kind of an important number throughout tonight's presentation. Dane County, for example, is two-point-three-seven, that is a number that you are a part of. Jefferson County, same goes, zero-point-seven-four percent. Another challenge that all communities face is you have a limitation on how much general obligation debt you can have outstanding at any point in time. The irony here, though, is you can structure that debt however you want, and literally have a one-year payment up to infinite of whatever payment amount you can have, because those are not subject to levy limits, so I'll repeat that later on, but just understand the limitation for general obligation debt is how much you have outstanding, not your payments. So that is five percent of your total equalized value, and what I mean by total equalized value, that's inclusive of your tax incremental districts and non-TID properties as well. Currently, you're at eighteen percent of that statutory limit, so of the total amount that you get, you know, up to that five, you're at eighteen percent of that. Most communities are fifty percent or higher in the state of Wisconsin. I can guarantee you that, because we work for a lot of communities throughout the state.
To clarify, that means most communities are borrowed more than we are for that?
Hundred percent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
General and oper, so the next slide that I'm on is starting to talk about kind of general and operating funds, I call revenue methodology, but just thinking about like, how do we put a budget together? You'll maybe understand why I say revenue methodology, because the way I think about it is, like, what's, what's our variables here, just simple algebra? We have, you know, X plus Y equals Z, or X minus Y equals Z. So here, you're building your budget needs as kind of step one, right? So your administrators working with your department heads to request their budget needs, so they're getting their expenditures, we'll look at that as the why. The next is looking at non-levy revenue sources, so, you know, any interest earnings, state aids is probably the biggest one for the Village of Cambridge. You have pilots, other things in terms of non-levy revenue sources. That said, you kind of want to keep that flat, or with consistent trends. The biggest mistake we see with communities is over-budgeting for interest expense, because they've had a very good year of interest earnings, and all of a sudden, that's, hey, that was our number that we earned last year, let's just plug that in for the next budget, and go from there. But then the interest rates drop, because they're in a variable rate environment in terms of their investments and not a fixed-rate item, and all of a sudden, they don't have that revenue for the next year. So we generally recommend kind of trying to be as light as possible for situations like that, unless you have a known adjustment. So for example, a couple of years ago, as the state representative that came in during public comments said, you know, Act twelve was passed that helped municipalities at that time, but we're not injecting anything in our analysis that's going to say we have, you know, Act thirteen coming, or, right, the next round there. So you don't want to budget for something that would not be expected, so again, that's why we hold it flat at current levels, or even reduce it in some instances. So that's our X. Then we solve for our levy need, right? So we have these expenditures and our non-levy revenue sources. When I gather all that information together, I now know what our levy need is. This is how a draft budget should be put together, even if it doesn't fit with... This is how a draft budget should be put together, even if it doesn't fit with the next section that I'll get into, but at least you're understanding on an initial level. Now we have variables on each side of the equation that we can change and we need to figure out what our levy need is and if we can change both sides of the equation or just one, because we are limited in how much we can levy. So that's the final component is know how much you can levy. As I mentioned, and I will repeat several times tonight, you have an additional new allowable levy of what you did last year plus $63,000. Going into the next slide, looking at the village's levy components. So this is kind of like what makes up our total taxes that we send out. So your general and operating funds, when I say operating funds, that means the library in the, in the Village of Cambridge. So a part of the levy goes to the library, I'll get into numbers in a second. Part of the levy goes to the general fund. And then some communities will levy for capital. The Village of Cambridge has not done that, but just understand that capital is something technically you can levy for. Both of those first two boxes are subject to levy limits. And what I mean by that is there is no exemption on the levy limit worksheet that allows you to say, well, we do have a new police contract coming up that's going up higher than it previously was. We can just exempt that on the levy limit worksheet. It does not work like that. So bo-, both of those items and any components that would fall within are, are subject to levy limits. There are some few exceptions, you know, that we'll kind of get into in a second. But for the most part, then, for that reason, we generally will advise communities that keep your capital levy, if you do levy for that, your movable object. And what I mean by that, it's much easier to move a capital purchase than it is a person. Your GEO debt service is not subject to levy limits. So when I was speaking to, you can structure your debt however you want. You can claim whatever your annual debt payment is for general obligation debt to whatever amount it is and levy that if you want. But obviously, if you're saying, well, let's amortize all our debt in one year. So our million dollar, dollar borrowing, we're just going to put year one, you're going to take your tax rates for a little bit of a roller coaster. So again, just trying to think about that we can levy for whatever we need for debt, but it's imperative to note how it impacts our tax bill at the end of the day. Next slide. This is me trying to condense a two-hour presentation that we will give in Wanaquie and other places across the state in which we have elected officials and staff members come to, to teach levy limits. Again, that's a two-hour riveting presentation. We're trying to condense this in the one slide. So how levy limits work in terms of the restriction you have in terms of how much you can levy is governed by statute 660602. Highly recommend giving that a glance or attend the presentation that is free. The prior year's actual levy, so what you did last year, can be increased by that net new construction percentage. So whatever that percent is to what you did last year, that's how we came up with the $63,000, right? If you did have no net new construction or somehow negative net new construction, it's just zero. It is subject to numerous adjustments that may reduce or increase that allowable levy. Typically, the only one that you'll see communities use that's applicable to them and the majority of them use it is the line E adjustment, which is that debt service adjustment. So you can claim what you need for debt. The other one is if you have a joint fire and EMS district and they have limited their budget to their total charges to municipalities, so not your charge, the total charges to municipalities by CPI plus 2%. If they've gone under that from budget to budget, then you can claim whatever your change is. So that can help when you're budgeting for fire and EMS costs if you're under a fire, a joint fire agreement. So that's one of the other more common ones outside of that. Again, there's, you know, Googling WI DOR levy limit instructions comes up with a great PDF that kind of tells you all the adjustments. We have, give our free sessions. We can hand out presentation materials on that as well. If you don't have the opportunity to attend and you just kind of want to glance through all of those items. The biggest takeaway on this, orange box, the formula is just what did we do last year? Net of debt. And now this is a new item that I've yet to say here tonight. What they'll do is they'll say, what did you levy last year? But whatever you claimed for debt service gets subtracted out. So you don't, that net new construction doesn't build, you know, on the debt that you claimed last year, that, that debt amount, your line E adjustment gets subtracted out. And so it's what did we do last year net of debt? You add that net new construction percentage to that. That equals your base lev-, what we call base levy or your pre-adjustment levy, right? You haven't made any of these claims for debt service for the upcoming year. Or the joint fire one that I tried to explain, you know, you just have what did we do last year net of debt? Plus our net new construction, that's our base levy. This is the most important number when you're building a budget. Because that'll control what you can and cannot do operationally. There's various ways to navigate as you go, but understand that this is going to be the primary driver of what you're going to do when you start to build this draft budget. And then at the end, right, you can add whatever debt is needed. There may be other adjustments like the joint fire that you're doing as well, but understand that there may be other adjustments you may be making. But again, that base levy is what did we do last year net of debt times net new construction. So a little history there on the net new construction. On the next slide where it says no allowable levy, current levy limit parameters. This is the history of kind of the buying power of net new construction for the village. This year is obviously, as you can see, the best year you've had, just in this little window of time dating back to 2021. So understand when we have the years here, that's for your value and tax year for the next year's budget. So the 25 number that I'm showing is this is what's going to be allowed to add to your 2026 budget. Same would go for 24, that's what was allowed to add to the 25 budget. And 20, last year happened to be the worst year within this timeframe, or about $10,000. Going to the next slide, your levy history. Again, remember that equation that we, or that algebraic equation that we kind of walked through, looking to see what your levy need was to build your total levy need. And I kind of break this out by purpose in terms of general fund, library fund, capital fund, and your debt service levy. So there you can kind of see historically where each of these have been at in terms of, you know, for example, the library's been pretty flat, right? About 90,000 to 105,000, then back down to 95,000 last year. So that's your levy need. Another important number here is to look at your levy need net of debt, right? Because technically, we can claim whatever we need for debt service on the levy limit worksheet. So let's understand what's net of debt to see where that's kind of fit in to go where we need to go to get our budget complete. So then I show below that, under the levy limits. So now I'm on the bottom half of the chart. For example, the first year shown here on the left, 2022, your pre-adjustment allowable levy relative to your levy need net of debt, you know, was 95,000 less. Basically, your pre-adjustment was right under what you needed. Well, that was actually intentional because we did have the referendum that passed for the 95,000 to help support the increasing costs of public safety in the village. And so that was an extra claim that you can make that year that now is base building. So since that year, that 95,000 went into your base levy because it doesn't get subtracted out the next year. So that has been collecting whatever percentage net new construction is each year. But when it looks like negative 95, that shouldn't be taken negatively. That was intentional because we were just solving, right, for what would be needed for that other adjustment in terms of that additional 95,000. Then 23 kind of matched. 24, you know, two budgets ago, basically, this is when, right, the discussion of how much was enough for the referendum, I think, kind of started to take hold, right? There was additional increasing costs as you go beyond, you know, year one of passing that referendum. And essentially, right, you, you now started to go past in terms of your pre-adjustment allowable levy by about 104,000. So your debt adjustment could make up for that. So your total allowable levy could meet your net, you know, your net levy or your total need. And same would go for 2025. However, 2025's budget was a little, you know, closer to that pre-adjustment allowable levy or your base levy to your levy need net of debt. Sorry. More importantly, I think to everybody in the room, kind of where, where does that reside in terms of tax rate history? So here, understand I, you're in two counties, so I do show both counties. I grabbed property, a sample property in both counties. I did not say whose property that is. If this happens to be your assessed value and you're here tonight, I apologize. I just picked randomly on a map. But that said, understanding kind of any value and seeing the percentage adjustment, that would be true because everybody's tax bill is calculated the same. So in terms of what your percentage, you know, this individual sample property's percentage change, yours should be relatively the same unless you had some sort of assessment change individually, like in addition to your house or subtraction from your house. So that said, the levy need, right, kind of matches what we were showing on the last slide. So the bottom half of this is where I'd like to lead your eyes. And the tax bill is based off of your total TID out assessed value in that county. And then understand that total levy need is actually split amongst the counties, oddly enough, on like a TID out equalized value, which is a little weird because you're not taxed on equalized, you're taxed on assessed. So in a two-county community, it's extra fun to build this analysis, but you have to split how much levy you get, right, and how much your tax or your portion is. All of that math doesn't fit on a slide, so I've kind of saved room so your eyes can actually see the numbers, but just understand that that levy need is actually split between the two counties. So you take that levy need by the total TID out assessed value, that builds your tax rate, right? So for example, Dane County's portion in 2022 against their TID out assessed value created a tax rate of $8.29. Now someone may say, well, my total tax rate was like $17. What, what are you talking about? This is the village portion only because the people in this room only control the village's budget. You do not control the county's budget, which is another portion of a tax bill that a resident or business would see. You do not control the school budget, you do not control the technical college budget. So you have four line items on each tax bill that I can pull up for anybody on Dane County GIS. I'm focused on the Village of Cambridge there. That goes for Jefferson County as well. I just mentioned Dane County because it's at the top. But that said, taking that tax rate by the sample property value, that builds your total sample property tax. So I've gotten this to match for all four years for these sample properties. And then you can kind of see how that's changed over time. So again, probably averaging out to about a 10% change throughout the three, you know, from year one through the next three years. And then for Jefferson County, some of this obviously changes in terms of how that levy is allocated each year and how the TID out equalized va-, or TID out equalized value changes, right? So it can be kind of weird how that sits. It also depends on, right, total levy in general and then total assessment value. And if one county grows, the other doesn't. But here, kind of a 10%, 4% and then 20%. The primary reason for that 20%, I would lead your eyes to just look at the TID out assessed value for Jefferson County, that actually went down. So that literally means there was more things deconstructed than constructed in that year and there was no revale to bring fair market value to the assessment role. So just understand like, that's part of the reason, right? Outside of, there's more levy, obviously, but understand as well that the value there has been very flat. The other thing I want to lead your eyes to is the understanding of how revales can work. And so if you look at 2023, you'll note that the tax rate did drop for both communities as the revaluation was complete. And that would have been for tax year '22, budget year '23. But you'll see that the tax rate went down by what looks like about $2, almost, maybe $1.50 for Dane County. But that said, the property value increases as well, right? It takes the individual property assessment from its assessed value, you know, before the revale to its fair market value at the time when the assessor is making his opinion, his or her opinion, on what that property is worth. So when that revale happens, you can have a tax rate that goes down and a tax bill that goes up even with a level levy. So I know that's a lot of word play, but just understand that basically the revale can work, that there's so much change that obviously your assessment can go up way higher and quicker than the rest of the assessment classes. That's been happening a lot ever since kind of we got out of Great Recession from '08 and '09 because now we're just in a hot residential market, right? So these residential property values, the fair market value has kind of skyrocketed. So when you do a revale, it can quickly change that. We have some communities that are going through it this year and one, their total revale is 34%. Their residential class on average is 50%. The commercial class is negative. So understand that you can see certain properties get assessed way differently given the economic environment that you're in. And that should be noted in terms of how that impacts tax bills as well. Any questions?
No, but Brian, with permission of the rest of the board, I think this would probably be a good, we have three of these workshops?
Yep, yep.
So this, before we get into the initial 2026 budget, I think, and again, the rest of the board, if we can pause on this one because we have another discussion segment here on our sewer rate study on the next agenda item. So if everybody on the board is fine with pausing here and then picking up on our next session, I would recommend you do that.
I agree.
Sounds good to me.
Everybody agree?
I, I think you gave us some good base information and I think it'd be good for us to be able to absorb that as we get ready to then to talk about the next stuff. So we'd be more prepared for the next conversation.
Sounds great.
Good.
All right. So with that being said, we're going to move on to our second new business item, discussion and possible action on 2026 sewer rate study engagement with alerts.
Sure, so I unfortunately sent that to Lucy today. So if you guys want to actually see the document, take it to your next meeting, totally understand. But if you remember when we, we were asked to just kind of look at the Rockdale.
Regionalization?
Yeah, regionalization agreement. One thing that I mentioned there is in terms of what the attorneys put together, it was just charging kind of the base residential rate. The, them as a customer class as a whole, right, their, their own collection system, their impacts on your system are going to be much different than what a residential user does. In order to ensure that you're charging kind of fair and equitable costs, we'd highly recommend that you do what's called a cost of service study. And you allocate the total costs of the system, not by a flat percent to what you need to meet your costs, but you're spreading that amongst individual customer classes based on cost causation. The last time the village did this, to my knowledge, and I say that because I was the one who completed it, was 2017 and I think he implemented it in 2018. You get, you may have done other adjustments since that point, but in terms of a full cost of service study, that was the last time that that was done. When you inject a new user like this, this is kind of the time to do it again because you want to understand how they impact your system versus the residential class and industrial class, et cetera.
Who was the user?
What's that?
Who was the user in 2017?
Well, at that time, you just kind of decided to do it. I think we had some lift station projects or an interceptor main, I can't remember off the top of my head. But there was a big project upcoming that we were doing at that time to kind of see how that impacted the different customers. But the other reason you do it, right, a new user like this. So I gave kind of just, when I heard about the Rockdale thing, I said estimate about 8,000. The engagement that I sent today is for 7,000 and that's to do the cost of service study, present it. It will also update the connection fees because I understand that's a component that's in the Rockdale agreement. And that'll kind of help you also outline the agreement in the future in terms of who's paying for what to the points raised, as you mentioned during your update for the water and sewer. to the points raised, as you mentioned during your update for the water and sewer commission, which were great points is, right, who owns what part of that main and who pays for maintenance and things like that. We'll tie those elements to the financial charge, you know, that you end up charging them. So that's ultimately what we're trying to do with the rate study engagement. But totally understand if you want to take that to the next meeting because I didn't get that letter.
So Brian, at the last.
Water and Sewer Board, we made a recommendation to the board to approve you guys doing that.
Okay.
That, that's the recommendation from our board. So I, from the commission, so I'll make a motion to approve having ALARS do a cost of service study for us for the sewer cost as it and, and paying attention to how it impacts our regionalization with Rockdale. So Hollenbeck made that motion.
Trustee Creklo, second.
Questions?
Is that, that going to be paid out of water and sewer for that?
It would be paid out of water and sewer.
Right, but my question, Brian, is that something that we could pass along to Rockdale, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's totally up to your negotiation.
As part of our initial agreement, that would be, it's something that we could pass on to Rockdale. We'd want to make sure, because I don't know as you're doing that study, because this came up on water and sewer, as you're doing that study. So what is, how much of what you're doing in the study actually applies to the fourth main versus what portion of time you're spending might just apply to other areas of Cambridge? So if you could, you know,
Yeah.
do kind of a split out like that, because we, if, if some of it's going to apply to other areas of Cambridge and not just the Rockdale piece, we'd kind of want to only charge Rockdale for what applies to Rockdale.
Yeah, I, I would imagine it's probably like 30% of the time would be to the Rockdale item just because of its uniqueness. The remainder of it is pretty, you know, built into templates. And then we would be looking just to update things from new, you know, billing information that we get from staff.
So 30% of that bill, we would probably put forward.
Push forward to Rockdale, okay.
And, and it's, and it's important to note, I just always want to remind people this, that your tax dollars, tax dollars do not pay for water and sewer. Water and sewer is paid by the rate payers. So the people who use the water and sewer are the people who are paying for this, not tax dollars. Thank you.
All right, so that cost of service study, since it hasn't been done since 2017, is there going to be other adjustments on there other than just looking at the Rockdale regionalization?
The whole system.
It's the whole system, so it's kind of refreshing that because I, I know we've had.
But yeah, only 30% is going to get forward.
You know, a bunch of different, you know, need areas maybe that might be updated.
For like waste haulers and things like that.
Yep.
Yep, yep. So all of those charges are reviewed. Anything that you have in your sewer ordinances, we will be reviewing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 We need to do roll call.
Oh, yeah. Roll call because it's money.
Yeah, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Creklo?
Yes.
Blackwood?
Yes.
Trendo?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Rooney?
Yes. All right, motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
It's a lot to digest.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, moving on to 10C.
Should we ask what the turnaround time on that is? Because this is pretty urgent.
Say again?
Yeah.
Should we ask what the turnaround time is on the study?
Yeah, how, how, Brian, how quickly do you think you're going to be able to turn that around?
Depending on how quickly I get information in terms of flows from Rockdale, which I'm in connection with Lucas from General Engineering, or maybe I have the engineering firm wrong, but Lucas, and then from your staff for the Cambridge usage. So that, it, once I get that information, probably three weeks. And then reviewing that with staff and then presenting, so I would say four weeks at minimum if I were to get information tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to 10C, discussion and possible action regarding mailbox replacement policy. All right, who's got this one, Lucy?
I think we can get through these next ones pretty quickly. The mailbox replacement policy, I was going through my desk and I found it in the bottom of, bottom of a desk. It refers to if a snowbox or a mailbox is damaged during snow plowing. It's just really an updated version to match the previous one that I found that was from 2008. It basically says all the same things and as the one we already have on the books, just updated to look like the new policies we have.
Is, this is a policy, not an ordinance, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
I can't.
Why is this, why isn't this just going to committees?
Because it's something we could just quickly take care of here.
Okay.
Sorry, I mean.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure it was different. Yep, okay.
I mean, anything can go to the, directly to the board. It doesn't have to go to a committee first.
Apologies, I can bring it to the committee.
Interesting that this made it on the agenda and other things didn't, but okay, go ahead. What else?
So is the one in the packet the updated version then that we want?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the snow and ice removal policy as presented in our packet.
Well, we're on mailbox replacement.
Mailbox replacement policy as presented in the packet.
Trustee Creklo, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on to 10D, discussion and possible action regarding snow and ice removal policy.
As far as I know, the Village of Cambridge didn't have a snow and ice, ice removal policy. Almost all of our other neighboring communities do and it is publicly posted. So I went through and tried to make the best, most comprehensive one pulling from other communities. I feel it would be, we fielded a lot of questions about snow removal and I think it would be good for staff and good to have outlines that we can, something to fall back onto, something consistent. So if people say, well, why did you do this this day and not, and not the next? So this, this is just a compilation, or excuse me, a, I pulled from, like I said, a lot of different communities to make this snow and ice removal policy. And I thought it was important to get that before snow, snow starts flying. And like I said, as far as I know, this wasn't something we, we, we had previously.
So this is more posting so that the public understands kind of the guidelines of snow removal, so they know.
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Creklo, make a motion to approve the snow and ice removal policy as posted in the packet.
Trustee Blackwood, seconds.
We have a motion and a second for snow and ice removal policy. Any questions or concerns? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to D, to E, discussion and possible action regarding fall leaf pickup policy.
I don't believe there's any approval or action necessary on this. It's just an update, updated version to match all the previous other policies, trying to make it cohesive and get it out there to the public before we pick up leaves this November.
So these are all things that have already been agreed to, already in place? And this is just all in one comprehensive spot now and, and to allow the people to see it?
Correct. Like I said, no, I don't believe any action needs to be taken. This is just an updated version to look like the rest.
Looks good.
Nice.
Okay.
Good job on getting that consistency across those, Cody.
Thank you. I will try to bring it to the appropriate committees next time.
Thank you. Moving on to 10F, discussion and possible action regarding resolution requested, requesting of the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors that the Village of Cambridge Library be exempted from payment of any tax for the support of the county library service. I believe we had something similar to this last board meeting with Dane County. So I believe this is just the Jefferson counterpart to that. So I will take a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Trustee Trendle.
Trustee Hollenbeck, the second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns to staff? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to Gulf, discussion and possible action regarding Village Hall safety and security. Lucy, I'll let you take that.
So I've already began a safety policy for the Village Hall, which we did not have. I do not have it ready to be included in the packet. I will be working with our Dane County deputies as well. Yes, just having a, a process, but there are some other ideas and I've met with staff as well and as well, the office staff as well as Cody, because I want to address this holistically as a village, not just Village Hall, but as for the DPW building. And so I asked staff to bring all ideas, some of my initial ideas where, were to have, if we, and again, I don't know the cost, but if we could have automatic locks at the previous municipalities I worked for, which were a similar size to us, all the doors were on timers. And so therefore, 7:30 AM, all the doors unlocked. 4:00 PM, the doors all are unlocked, then they relocked. And then at any time, if there was an emergency, there are certain people such as the administrator and other staff that have the ability to put the building on lockdown on the computer in, in a moment's notice. We did have an incident last Friday and I was at a conference, I was not here for that. But in order to go to the Spring Street entrance and lock, we have to go out there, go outside and physically lock the doors. Some of the things that we're going to be putting into place and we'll communicate this with, with, with Village members, but we often, as staff members, work alone, especially on Tuesday nights until six, like from four to six PM, whether there are meetings or not. And so we may lock the downstairs entrance if there are, if nothing going on down here and put up a sign and have residents use the Spring Street entrance and also lock that side police door that's always open. That way we have control over who's coming in and out. And we also do have control to turn the elevator off as well as staff members, just to control full people. We're still open. A few other ideas that we had where, were to also keep that side police door locked because we have no visualization there. We have one camera, which is not in a good location in our office to see and that all just shows people coming in down here. But it's, and it might just be a matter of moving it to a place where someone can keep an eye on it. And yes, see, can you think of any, we threw, we threw out so many different ideas. Is there anything else that, or Cody, that you can think of?
Just like a system, like for cameras, if possibly we can get some sort of vision, like Lucy was mentioning. Sometimes we don't have, a lot of the times, you know, our part timer just comes in for certain hours and the other person might be alone. So just having some sort of security system that could kind of alert us of like what's going on in the building. Otherwise, we have no idea what's going on.
So the, my question would be, are you guys working on just ideas? And then would it be a plan of like, our recommendation is we're going to need extra funding for X, Y, Z locks, different things like that?
Yes, a, a lot more work needs to be done. I just actually thought of something. Cody with Public Works just had all the Public Works and water sewer, sewer storm facilities locks changed. And I had him send that information to me because we have different keys for every single thing. And Cody was explaining to me about how we can control who, who has, feel free to just take a step up here and chime in more in depth on that and how that would be beneficial as well.
No problem, Lucy. I recently got the locks for water, sewer and DPW buildings changed. It's a tier system where one key can unlock everything, but if you want someone to only be able to access DPW buildings, there's a specific key for that or, or only, you know, the downstairs or the upstairs or one specific door. And they do a pretty good job of reducing the amount of keys. And also if there ever is a specific key that is compromised, you don't have to change every lock. They just come and rekey it and give you new keys. So.
So I know just from a village and user perspective, I know that the bathrooms downstairs here and that vending machine is used a lot by the community. So, so I, I would be concerned about when you're looking to lock those doors. I could understand not having the elevator in use. And if someone does want to see you guys upstairs, having to walk around the building to do it. I, I would be, I, just because of how this community uses the bathrooms and that vending machine downstairs, I would hate to restrict that usage. But I would think by having the elevator not being able to be used, then people would have to walk around in order to see you guys upstairs. So I can see that concern, but I think rather than just locking down here, maybe restricting the elevator instead might be an option.
Absolutely, and the bathrooms upstairs would be open to the public as well.
One thing we have to consider if we're talking about locking down elevators though is the American Disabilities Act. We have to provide reasonable access to individuals who require.
Yeah, but they can get there from the, from Spring Street. There is access, right, and through Spring Street for people who are in wheelchairs, et cetera. They don't have to use the elevator.
We also discussed the glass at Village Hall. I don't even know if it's actually glass and it's not secure. And then some other things that I will be getting costs and bringing to the board are a drop safe, our drop box for outside of the Village Hall. Getting a, one that would be bolted to the ground versus what we currently have. I just started looking at all security aspects for the building. Increased lighting around the Village Hall and again, cameras.
And there are grants that we can write for as well too that are provided. Sorry, I did not mean to cut you off. That's okay. I have, this is safety and security. How is this different than like an emergency preparedness plan and having like a critical response team?
Absolutely. So that's also something that I'm working on separately. But emergency preparedness plan is more for weather emergencies, things within the community, not necessarily specific to Village Hall or DPW building staff safety.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yep.
So are you going to have this discussion with Chad or, or officers and kind of see what he thinks and kind of get a plan forward and then bring it back to us?
Yes, I already have had a meeting with Chad. And the final thing that staff, one of their recommendations is to implement some type, some type of a panic button as well. But yes, so that will be, again, something that I will be working on. If there are parts of this that any of the trustees would like to participate or take on, I'd appreciate it because this is a, is a very important matter. But our staff is taking all of the actionable items and working on all of them. And so we're looking for support of offloading some of this as well.
I think the Personnel Department Committee can help out with some of the. I think the Personnel Department Committee can help out with some of the guidelines, policies and some of that stuff. I think cost obviously is something that's got to get gathered up for that, so.
I can gather some information on grant writing and help with that if need be.
Okay. Any other discussion on safety and security? If not, we're going to move on to eleven, correspondence. Letter from Clay Frazier. I believe that had to do with the fish ponds.
And that was included in the packet.
Yep. Has, have you reached out to Clay?
I have reached out to Clay. I have not connected with him. I'm not able to act on anything and I can bring it back as an actual item, but he is looking for funding on this. If you guys have read the letter, he reached out to the trustees initially. And so I was not directed from staff as a collaborative board to start discussions. And I know our priority are safety right now with, with our funds, our safety and urgent matters, so.
Here, here's the thing. If he has a proposal he would like to bring to the board,
Yes.
we would, we would welcome looking at that proposal. I think it would go to the Public Works Committee first.
Yes.
And then I would work with our director and et cetera to, to just review that proposal and see if there's portions of it or all of it that, you know, might make sense. And then we could include that in plans and budgeting for the next year. Yep. Is that okay, Cody?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think that would be a Public Works thing. If you want to reach out to him and say if he has a proposal, um, send it to us and then, and then we'll go from that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I don't think it's a bad idea to connect him with our village forester either, just to kind of get those two connected, so. Anything else on correspondence? Okay, moving on to twelve, we have our second public comment. Three minutes. Anybody want to make a public comment? Going once, twice? Okay, number thirteen, referrals to staff. Any referrals to staff? Lucy, I have a question that was posed to me from our, from our county supervisor about timeline on the bridge construction. If you could reach out to her before her county meeting, which I believe is.
That's Carrie Marin.
Yeah, Carrie Marin. And she just wants to kind of give an update on our, the bridge over here on PQ that's going to be replaced. Or if you can give me that information, I can pass it on to her, whatever's easiest for you. That's one thing. You had some referrals for your fire and EMS?
Yes, I can email you with the specifics on those for the next meeting. And then also I will get you the potential dates for a joint municipality meeting.
And I, I know time has passed since the initial response to that email. I will include some more open dates for that as well.
We're looking at Christiana as well too, just as well. So just to give us more options as well, but I'd appreciate that.
Okay, anything on the referrals to staff for water and sewer for the regionalization or no?
She's already got them. And those would actually go for, that would actually go to the, I suppose you're acting, I was gonna say, that would go to our water and sewer clerk, but yeah. And you were at the last meeting, so we're good there.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to, unless anybody else has any other referrals to staff?
There was a referral for personnel. So I let Lucy know that since we're already meeting on Thursday with that joint meeting, to add that to the agenda and on the agenda for that, so.
Okay.
All good on my referrals. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to fourteen, announcements. So we have joint personnel, Public Works meeting September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five at six thirty PM. And we have Office and Finance Committee meeting September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
And I apologize, that time is wrong. It's at five forty-five PM.
Which, for which meeting?
Water and Finance is at five forty-five?
Five. Planning Commission, was it rescheduled?
We don't have a regular meeting, but we have here, uh, meeting.
Our next meeting's October thirteenth.
Correct, October thirteenth, and we do have that scheduled, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else for announcements? If not, I'll take fifteen.
Blackwood makes a motion to adjourn. Schultz, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any comment? All right, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.